All right, we have Mayor Jay Max Davis.
Let me call the special call public hearing to order.
Oh, sorry.
And welcome, everybody. If you'd like to call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Jay Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District One, present. Councilmember Jim Meyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gabia, District Four.
Present.
All are present.
All right. Real quickly, this is our public hearing, special call meeting here, supposed to be at 6:00. We had an executive session that started a little bit late. Just to give some background or ground rules for how we do our public hearings, there are some forms in the back of the room, and I believe Daniel here, if you raise your hand, Daniel, in the white shirt up front, who sit with the laptop on his lap. If you fill out the forms completely, that's your name, your complete address, including zip code and city if any, and pass them into Daniel, and then when you come to the podium, if you please state your name and the neighborhood in which you live, and then keep your comments, please, to three minutes. And the topic of the public hearing tonight is on the rezoning ordinance, a consideration of the rezoning of Century Center Office Park, so we really won't be considering any other, can't have any other comments other than based on what's on the agenda tonight. I'd like to remind everybody that there's applause will not be, we can't have anybody applause or catcall or make noises, I don't think we're going to have any problems with that, we rarely do. And just ask everybody to please be polite and courteous and state your opinion for the record, and we'll go to the next person. So, thank you very much. So, we need to open the public hearing. Susan, you want to give a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and sound the item into the record. It's the rezoning, RZ 13-05, consideration of rezoning of Century Center Office Park to PC3 Pedestrian Community District located off of Claremont Road in Landlots 195, 196, 201, 203, and 204 of the 18th District, DeKalb County, Georgia.
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the City Manager indicated, this is resoning petition, RZ 1305. The proposed, the actual petitioner is the City of Brookhaven. The property under question is known as Century Center, Century Center Office Park, and as previously noted, is located off Claremont Road in Landlots 195, 196, 201, 203, and 204, 18th District, DeKalb County. This potential rezoning has been duly advertised and properly noticed. The tract in the earlier version of the staff report indicated that the site contained 100.229 acres. We did correct that on the record in the Planning Commission hearing, the site actually contains 105.1 acres. And I will, Daniel, if you can pull up on the screen, there's an area that's been removed from the application. In the northwest area of the property adjacent to Claremont Road, there's a small portion of property that has been removed from the rezoning application, as well as the annexation petition that you will be seeing later in the evening. And that portion represents the difference between the 105.1 and the 102.29 acres.
All right.
You can move it off of that now, if you don't mind.
It's a panhandle.
That's it, flagpole. And then if you can go to the, that one, and then scroll down to the master plan. Thank you. Perfect.
Woody's section on the top has been removed, on left, top left?
Yes, yes, it has been removed. This is the wrong composite plan or master plan. DeKalb County records indicate this property is currently zoned OI Office Institution and OD Office Distribution. The proposed zoning initiated by the City of Brookhaven is PC-3 Pedestrian Community District. The owners of the property include Highwoods Realty Limited Partnership, Highwoods for South Limited Partnership, and Century Center Group, a real estate investment trust doing business as Highwood Properties, Inc., Gremer H. Crum, and Emily Fisher Crum. The intent of the development of this property is to provide a pedestrian-friendly town center accessible via sidewalks within Century Center, to recognize the existing built environment and to allow for future mixed use and redevelopment containing commercial office, residential, retail service space, and hotel land uses. On July 1st, 2013, the property owners of the hearing question filed an application for annexation into the City of Brookhaven. On the same day pursuant to OCGA 36-36-6, by authority vested in the Mayor and Council, the City of Brookhaven served DeKalb County with statutory notice of intent to annex subject property. Pursuant to OCGA 36-66-4, the City of Brookhaven has mandated to complete all of the zoning procedures with respect to a piece of property to be annexed, except for the final vote on the zoning prior to the adoption of the annexation ordinance. Therefore, the City of Brookhaven initiated the zoning process and advertised for special call public hearings of the Planning Commission on July 18th, 2013, which was held, and Mayor and City Council on July 22nd tonight. The City Council annexation hearing is also scheduled for first read tonight, while the second read is scheduled for July 23rd. Subsequently, the final vote on the zoning is also scheduled. The Century Center master plan demonstrated on the overhead recognizes the existing built environment and further identifies plans for future development. This plan identifies six pods. Pod One is basically the town center of the master plan and contains 21 acres, and is located at the center of the Office Park along both sides of Century Boulevard, and at present consists of five nearly 50-year-old single-story office buildings with a total of 106,109 square feet, and there are surface parking located there. That particular area has the greatest potential for mixed-use development and redevelopment and will include Class A commercial office space, residential, and retail service. The overriding objective is to present a pedestrian-friendly town center which will be accessible via sidewalks from all of Century Center. This town center is planned for a concentration of restaurants, outdoor seating, and other park amenities. The components in Pod One are Class A commercial office, up to 12 stories and a million square feet of ancillary retail and service, residential up to 500 high-end multifamily units, condo or rental, up to 75,000 square feet of retail service, and a parking ratio of 3.5 per thousand up to 5 per thousand, basically driven by market, most parking would be structured and hotel use. Those are the components for Pod One. Pod Two is located to the south of 2200 Century Parkway, and between Pod Two and Pod Four, there's an existing 11-story office building. The pod is bounded by I-85 to the east, Century Boulevard to the south, and Century Parkway to the west, and contains approximately three acres, and at present consists entirely of a surface parking lot. The parcel is planned for a 12-story Class A commercial office building up to 300,000 square feet, including ancillary retail and service with structured parking. Pod Three is the northeasternmost pod located at the end of Century Parkway, inbounded to the northeast by Peachtree Creek and to the east by I-85. At present, this area is improved with primarily surface parking and approximately 10,000 square feet of an annexed building that is used as a service center for a large tenant located in the 2635 Century Parkway building. This parcel contains approximately nine acres and is planned for a Class A commercial office building of up to 300,000 square feet and 12 stories, comparable to the two existing adjacent 10-story buildings, including ancillary retail and services with structured parking. Pod Four is located between Pod Two and Three and consists of existing buildings 2200, 2400, 2500, 2600, 2635, and 2800 Century Parkway, which range from five to 11 stories with combined total of 956,861 square feet. This pod is approximately 28 acres. There are three structured parking decks as well as surface parking. This plan is planned for additional Class A commercial office space of 200,000 square feet, including ancillary retail and services up to eight stories. Pod Five, located at the intersection of I-85 and Century Boulevard, contains the Marriott Atlanta Century Center Hotel. This hotel is subject to a ground lease, and the land is owned by Emily Fisher Crum, approximately nine acres. The existing hotel contains 15 floors, 282 rooms, five suites, and 16 meeting rooms with 25,000 square feet of meeting space. The site is planned to consist of existing use, there are no plans for change on Pod Five. Pod Six, this pod is located at the main entrance of Century Center from Claremont Road and along Claremont Road. This pod consists of existing buildings 1800, 1825, and 1875 Century Boulevard, and 2957 and 2987 Claremont Road, totaling 687,164 square feet with supporting surface and structured parking. This pod contains approximately 29 acres and is planned for Class A commercial office space of 200,000 square feet, including ancillary retail and services up to eight stories. In regard to adjacent land uses, the site is surrounded by offices, single-family residential, multifamily residential, retail, a storage facility, and Interstate I-85 and the access road to the interstate. To the north is OI and R-75 Office, Gables Apartments and Single Family Residential. To the east is I-85 Access Road and the interstate. To the south, the storage facility and Sam's Club exists, zoned OD and C1, and to the west, the property is zoned OI and contains office. The subject property is located in DeKalb County's north planning area and is identified in the Office Park character area within the county's comprehensive plan, 2005, 2005 to 2025. The Office Park character area is intended to provide areas for mixed use, including office, accessory commercial, and high-density residential. The proposed PC3 Pedestrian Community District zoning is identified within the City of Brookhaven zoning ordinance as a compatible zoning meeting the policy intent of the comprehensive plan. Given the existing built environment and the aforementioned adjacent uses, it is the staff's opinion that the proposed zoning will permit uses that are suitable. Also, given the existing built environment, the property appears to have reasonable economic uses currently zoned, but appears to have areas that are yet to be developed or redeveloped to the site's potential. Adjacent and nearby properties have been coexisting for some time. The Century Center Office Park does not appear to have caused adverse impacts during that time, nor does it appear that the zoning proposal would adversely affect adjacent or nearby property. The existing use, proposed use, comprehensive plan, and intent of the pedestrian community district provides supporting grounds for approval of the zoning proposal. It should be noted that the purpose and intent of the PC District regulations are to encourage the development of comprehensively planned, pedestrian-oriented, and human-scale places. The PC District allows the flexible and compatible arrangement of residential, commercial, office, institutional, and civic uses while preserving the significant and valuable features of the natural and artificial environment. The proposed zoning and master plan support these principles. There are no such known national register historic buildings or sites or districts or archaeological resources identified or known by staff to be on or near the subject property. However, the subject property was once a farm belonging to Emily Fisher Crum's family, where Mrs. Crum's father tended crops, and where in the early 1900s as a child she played. Today, Mrs. Crum is a distinguished philanthropist, 99 years old, and a resident of Brookhaven. Highwoods Properties, Inc. has erected a plaque on the subject property in recognition of the former Fisher family farm. An increase in development will increase the use of streets, transportation facilities, utilities, and schools. The streets within the development are privately owned. Mitigating measures may be required to offset increased demand for services. The City of Brookhaven Public Works and Transportation Department have not provided comments regarding this application. The City of Brookhaven Police Department has indicated that there will be a need for additional four members of the police team to serve the area. The Department of Geographical Information Services from DeKalb County has replied to the rezoning application, more or less in regard to the annexation, indicating that they will be responsible for updating all records relative to annexation in their county maps. The DeKalb County Fire Marshal has not responded to this application, nor has the Board of Education. We have not received comments from the DeKalb County Office of Watershed Mitigation. It should be noted that the City of Brookhaven recently approved a resolution providing for the establishment of stormwater service fee rates and credits to stormwater service fee. Such fees will generate revenue for the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund for stormwater management purposes. The staff has recommended approval of this PC3 zoning with four conditions, and those are that the subject property shall be developed in substantial accordance with the Century Center Office Park master plan and pod descriptions included within the staff recommendation. Number two, pedestrian community district development aspects pertaining to ownership, phasing, transportation, and stormwater management practices shall be executed by the developer in conjunction with the community development director. Number three, any previous development standards or permits approved or issued by DeKalb County at the time of annexation shall be accepted by the City of Brookhaven. Number four, any previous conditions of zoning, special land use permits, variances, or other special permits imposed by the DeKalb County shall be in effect and shall be implemented in conjunction with the master plan. Any such DeKalb terms and imposed conditions by the City of Brookhaven shall be interpreted and implemented by the community development director. The property owner has agreed to the four conditions recommended by the staff. The Planning Commission heard this petition during their July 18th hearing, recommended approval of the PC3 zoning subject to an additional condition, which reads its volus. Any change in roadway pattern, building footprint, or any deviation in proportions of residential, commercial, or retail space and deviation from what is required in the PC3 district ordinance is to be considered a substantial change that must require approval by the Planning Commission and City Council. That concludes the staff report. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you would like to at this time.
All right. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
First comment from the public?
Mr. Vike.
I'm sorry, Mayor, the property owner's representative is here, if he wishes to make a comment.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Jim Bicetta, and I work for Highwoods Properties, and I'm the Atlanta Division Manager. We have submitted this application desiring to work with a government that's a little closer to the people and hopefully a little more proactive in attracting new employers, new business to this, to Century Center. We're asking for the zoning change in conjunction with the annexation because we think it's critical to our success and the success of Century Center. We've been very frustrated operating in DeKalb County. It's just been a very burdensome process trying to attract new businesses and employers. Just a very, very protracted, cumbersome, difficult process at present. And so, when I saw the formation of Brookhaven, I was very excited about it. I've been a 30-year resident of Sandy Springs, and I see the things happening in Brookhaven that I've observed occur in Sandy Springs, and it seemed to make a lot of sense. So, we're asking for greater density, but we're less concerned with the density than we are with the zoning, simply because one of the very first things that an applicant or that a potential user asks for in a build-to-suit contest is, do you have your zoning? We have not been able to say that we have our zoning, because we don't. It's been a very difficult process trying to attract new employers and to come out of the ground with new buildings. We think that Brookhaven will be much more proactive in this regard, but we really feel that we need the appropriate zoning. The zoning that we're asking for is representative of the current conditions of Century Center, but will allow us to redevelop certain areas of the park, for example, the five single-story office buildings in Pod One, which are approaching 50 years old. We really can't lease those buildings at present. They're very difficult to lease in their current condition, they're obsolete. And we think that we can make, you know, a lot of progress in that area and bring a very attractive product to Brookhaven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Elmer Vike. I'm a resident of Claremont Terrace neighborhood. I am speaking on behalf of my neighborhood and also the citizens of Chambly. We ask, one, that the City Council not change the zoning for this area, and, two, that the application for annexation by Highwoods be declined by the city. The area in question is part of a voter referendum passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor for the area to be looked at by the residents to annex in the area of Chambly. This is being done after issues with the last election. Councilwoman Williams, I need some questions about that. You had emailed Maxine Daniels at DeKalb County about that. I have copies of the emails outlining the fact that there were areas that were incorrectly marked for that vote, and then in fact, when the county was trying to fix that vote, they sent the replacement voting ballots out to incorrect addresses. So, to make a blanket statement that there were no issues is not the case. This entire process is being pushed through in incredibly fast manner publicly, even though it's been well underway with the city for quite a while, with your first meetings with property owners going back to March, with the applicant's original request for annexation being filed with the city on June 21st, or the official one going out to DeKalb County being on July 1st. You have set a series of special meetings to hear this instead of using the regularly scheduled meetings, which one of your Planning Commission members even brought into question last week, that's why this couldn't be handled, it's a matter of routine business. From reading the emails obtained through open records from your city, it seems that there is a desire to push this through in a very quick manner, and note that there is an email from your city manager that notes in the conditions that Ms. Crum, who controls the majority of this population, is to quote, "99 years old and in very poor health." Simply put, for our community, this is, you know, what's happening here is, you're trying, the vote for our citizens is being put into question by the efforts of others, and it's something that we are not comfortable with. I have for the City Council petitions signed by over 400 members of the community of both the unincorporated areas and the surrounding cities. I also have the comments to go along with those, I'd like those to be put into the official record. And I again ask that you do not pursue this zoning change or this annexation. Thank you.
Just, I guess you can leave those aside. I just want to make sure, so on the, for Lenny, on the public hearing, we can hear issues that are not related to the zoning, or needs to be on the zoning?
It's really about the zoning.
Okay, so, so in the, so follow-up comments, if you could, please remember that the, this public hearing for tonight is on the rezoning ordinance, not on anything else other than the rezoning. So, if you could just make sure you keep your comments to rezoning, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Jordan Fox.
Hi, my name is Jordan Fox, I live in Wakefield Forest, not too far from here, and I know that I'm supposed to stick to zoning as much as possible, I'll do my best to do that, but like Elmer said, we feel that the city should reject both the zoning application and the annexation application. We feel that accepting zoning changes and the annexation application will have negative impacts not only on our area, but also on the City of Brookhaven itself. We feel that the area in Beaufort Highway where a lot of the late-night establishments exist and unincorporated DeKalb is going to place an undue burden on the City of Brookhaven Police, and if we're not allowed to annex into Chambly, your police force is going to be tied up dealing with crime resulting from late-night establishments and unincorporated DeKalb. If you will put this off until after we get to vote on Chambly annexation, hopefully we will annex into Chambly. Chambly will not allow those late-night establishments to continue to operate in the manner that they are and cause crime in both our area and the City of Brookhaven, and I feel confident in that because they have roughly twice the amount of police per person than unincorporated DeKalb or the City of Brookhaven. So, please don't rush this through, please don't take this lightly, this is a very serious issue that should be vetted for months, should not be rushed through, and if you rush it through, you're going to be doing a detriment not only to us, but to your own citizens as well. So, you have to decide what's more important to you, rushing this through, getting it over with, or protecting the safety of your citizens. It's your choice.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. I'm going to make one more reminder that we keep the comments to the rezoning ordinance, if, just want to make sure that that's the case, and I don't want to have to interrupt anybody, so just please respect the procedure we have to follow here. Thank you.
Bill Lowe.
Hello, thank you for hearing me. I'm Bill Lowe, I live in Beverly Hills, that's in Chambly, unincorporated DeKalb. I have documentation here, it's actually Georgia Code. I will turn that in, but I'm going to read off the numbers just for you guys to make note of. It's 36-36-112 and 36-36-113. They specifically do with, deal with a change in zoning or land use while doing an annexation. Essentially, the county can object once zoning changes are approved if an increase in density is made. Have you guys done research on that?
We can't respond to questions, hold on.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of 36-113 and 36-112. I would like those entered in the record, please.
Thank you, Susan, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Dan McKenna?
Oh, no. You'd be quicker, Daniel.
Thanks for having the forum for us to speak, I appreciate that greatly. Based on the...
Did you just give your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dan McKenna, 3280 Claremont North, Atlanta. Based on the results of, and the documents provided by your zoning group, it said specifically, in the statements, that there would be no effect.
Could you push the mic up and speak into the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll put on my glasses, I don't... All right. Item number four says that the proposal will not adversely affect the adjacent or nearby property. However, based on the numbers here, it looks like there'll be close to 9,000 to 10,000 additional parking spaces if this zoning is approved. How would those, I know you can't answer the questions, but obviously, 9,000 additional cars coming down Claremont Road on a daily basis would adversely affect local areas. In addition to that, with the state plans for putting sidewalks on Claremont Road, those plans would be overwhelmed by this addition before they could even be completed in construction. And last point, probably a cousin, but Mr. McKenna stated in his opening, in his discussion earlier, that the owners of the property would like to have their neighbors have better input into what they could have this rezoned as to make better use of the property. I fully understand that, but if you look at the City of Brookhaven as aligned, very few, a very small percentage of this city is a neighbor of this property. The neighbors have no impact and no input onto the zoning decisions or how you could affect the rest of us down the string. affect the rest of us down the stream. So if possible, please take into account the request of the people that are actually the neighbors here. People in Brookhaven that live on Ashford Dunwoodie 285 have no impact whatsoever, but those of us that live right down the street are definitely going to be impacted by 10,000 people a day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Daniel?
I have no more, Mr. Mc...
That's it? All right. No more public comments? Sure, somebody's got a form they want to turn in?
Todd?
Yeah.
Sorry. Come on up, sir.
Hi. My name is Todd Price. I live in Warwick Circle in Wakefield Forest, unincorporated DeKalb County. I sent an email to the mayor and to the city council on Friday expressing my opinion about this. I just wanted to voice a couple of things that I observed when I was at the planning commission meeting last week. First of all, I think this point's already been brought up, but Commissioner Heston asked city staff what the rush is, why there was a specially called session for this zoning request. At the meeting, it didn't seem like there was an answer other than the fact that Century Center has requested this, and that's why we're doing it. Also, Commissioner Hondren had several concerns about the application that was lacking significant information that would normally be required if this type of zoning change was requested in a property that currently exists in the city. But seemed to me like since the city is proposing this, you're kind of like deciding to not request those details specifically related to the traffic study, watershed, et cetera. Again, goes to the question of why is this being rushed? And finally, Mr. Paquette himself, who is here from Highwoods Properties, said to the planning commission that their plans, due to the economic circumstances today in our economy, are at least two years down the road from when they'll start making any changes to this property in question. So again, goes to the question, why is this happening right now? So like Jordan said, I would just request that you defer this until after this referendum in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Mark Davis?
My name is Mark Davis. I live on Surrey Lane in Brookhaven, but I grew up in the Hillcrest neighborhood and still have a house there. So if you will, I'm a dual citizen and affected by both issues here. There are a number of issues, specifically with the zoning. It was brought up by the zoning commission that in an annexation, the city has to take all of the property, and the roads are expected to be public. In this case, they are not. They are private, including the bridge that's over indicated on Century Boulevard, Over Peachtree Creek. That's actually two separate bridges. A number of years, the Office Park had the cab audited to see if they could give it to the county. Well, it doesn't meet code, so they wouldn't accept it, which means I, as a taxpayer of Brookhaven, are going to pay for a new bridge on a property that we're going to annex. So that hasn't been brought up or dealt with as far as where does that money come from? Also, in the pod layout, in Pod number one, it's currently one-story buildings. The Office Park has indicated that they would like to go up to 12 stories in the zoning change. Well, there's currently allowed with DeKalb County up to five stories, and they have already got a height exception to go higher for the facade. That's already been approved and in place with the county. That was also not brought up with zoning, and I believe because there were so many changes and so many... There's so many special uses with the property that staff just has not had the resources or the time to bring all that to the forefront. Century Center is asking for this annexation and this rezoning. However, there's multiple commercial properties adjacent, some of it just as similar to the office buildings, that are not included in the annexation and/or the rezoning. They include, especially to the north, there are multi-story office buildings and single-story office buildings and an extended stay hotel. All of those butt up to the Century Center property, and yet they're not a part of this. That seems to be talking about neighbors. It seems now we have neighbors who don't have an impact on or have an impact on one another, but don't have any sort of interaction, interlock. To the south, of course, there's the Sam's, there is the Office Park, or I'm sorry, the office or the storage unit place, and the restaurant. They too are not a part of this proposal, and yet they share an awful lot of frontage with Century Center. In the conditions that are accepted for the zoning, number one says that you will accept the annexation according to a master plan. Other than this bubble map, there is no master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Next?
Mr. Matthews?
All right. Mr. Matthews, one down.
Can we agree that they run over by 15, 20 seconds?
Depending on how many more folks we have, I don't know. Yeah, if we... Daniel, how many more do you have? Were we done?
I have no more after Mr. Matthews, sir.
Okay. We'll give Mr. Davis a chance to come back up for one minute and finish it.
At least finish this thought process.
My name's Richard Matthews. I live at 1628 Richwood Drive. I'm extremely concerned about the haste that you, the council, and the zoning board that I sent through the meeting last week are trying to hasten this major decision and take a bite out of an island of major property within the county and leave isolated potentialists, for lack of a better word, probably poor English, but the apartments are a separate entity. That will require policing by someone. The adjoining properties that Mr. Davis was addressing is of high concern of mine because they can do anything they want to do within Incorporated DeKalb County, separate from the city of Brookhaven. But being in logistics for 42 years, I'm extremely concerned at any time when you can have a property rezoned to more than double the traffic flow and maybe quad the traffic flow and not have a pre-traffic study before presentation of a zoning issue. Going back to the incorporation of the city of Brookhaven, this property was incorporated, if my memory is right, in the original plan, was dropped out, and then now, all of a sudden, they want to annex into the city. That concerns me drastically because in this annexation, you're able to drive through a zoning change that wouldn't have come up during the city incorporation. It would have had to been handled as a separate entity. So I'm just extremely concerned. I travel that stretch of Clermont Road all the time. I have history of being in law enforcement, and I know there's going to be law enforcement issues with splitting properties like that's being split, and I think the neighbors adjoining to that is going to be hurt drastically. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, if you want to come up for one more minute to finish your thought?
Thank you, Mayor. I was close. Number one on the conditions that are accepted, it says according to a master plan. Again, like I said, other than this bubble chart, there is no master plan. This is what we have here. How is that a plan if we're looking at what's existing? And then that also leads right into the additional exception that the zoning committee put on, and that was any deviation from the plan would have to come back to zoning. Well, if you don't have a plan in the beginning...
You mean Planning Commission, not the zoning?
The Planning... I'm sorry. What did I say?
You were saying the zoning.
I'm sorry. Planning Commission. On the meeting last week, one of the gentlemen added the fifth condition that says any deviation from the master plan, we'd come back and revisit it. Well, when you don't have a plan, how can you come back and revisit? How can it be a change? It's all a change. Now, everything I covered, for the most part, is fact. Now, I'm going to give my personal opinion. Since I have grown up in the shadow of Century Center, I grew up, it was still woods. To the interstate, for the triangle building, it was all woods. The lodge was still there, and that was it. That was a hunting lodge.
It must be about 100 years old.
Yeah. Give or take. The Century Center, now while the current property owners, Highwoods, seems to have been a better landowner than the actual, the original developer, we as a community have never had a voice with anything that they've done, and it's all impacted us, including flooding, including a multi-story apartment building built right next to us that we... There was not even a meeting about. The FBI in Pod 3, which is the magenta shaded one, that's the FBI building, which has a holding cell there. If you remember the Brian Nichols case, when they finally arrested Brian Nichols, the person who shot the Fulton County Sheriff's deputies and the customs agent, when they picked him up, they brought him to the 10,000-square-foot storage structure, as it's listed in the... All of the paperwork. So everything that has gone on, we have had to sort of take it on the chin. And while I don't fault Highwoods for being annexed, who would not want to be in Brookhaven? But the zoning is going too far, too fast, and too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. If anybody has questions for staff, I do have one. Susan, is there a... When we received this application, is there a state law that we need to follow in order to... For the timeframe in which it can be heard and whatnot? What is the... For advertising and things such of that nature?
Well, upon receipt of the petition for annexation, we were required to notify the county within five days, and then we moved forward with the zoning process. And yes, there is a zoning procedure that we are required to follow for posting property, advertising in the paper, and having the planning commission hearing and the city council hearing. The hearings can be no less than 15 days from the date that the ad or the sign is posted, and no more than 45 days.
So have we cut short or rushed any of the application procedures or the zoning requirements as far as the zoning act?
I would say that the process that we followed meets the requirements of the zoning procedures. I would say that the hearings that you're having right now are occurring sooner than if an applicant were to submit the application. We did move forward quickly after we notified the county.
So after we complied with the law, we moved forward with our...
Right. But we do comply with the requirements of zoning procedures.
All right. And then for Marie, Mr. Davis mentioned a couple of things that I wanted to ask you You mentioned the parcels that aren't, basically aren't there, the commercial areas that aren't there. Subsequent to this application, can there be other parcels adjacent to or connected to this that could submit an application for annexation as well?
Yes, absolutely. As long as they meet the requirements of law, being contiguous to the city, and depending on the method of annexation, if they themselves, meaning 100% ownership of the property, they can come in and annex. The city also has the ability to accept an application for annexation and take more. It's called the 60% method, so there's an allowance that the city can include more property that's not part of the original request. It's been the practice of the city and the directive of the city is that we will only determine and review and consider applications of the 100% method, those seeking annexation themselves.
What if... Have you been contacted by any residents in the surrounding areas around Century Center in the neighborhoods?
Yes, I have.
Possible.
Immediately after notifying the county, once the application was filed on July 1st and we notified the county within that five-day period, as property owners surrounding the subject property learned of the annexation, I did have a number of phone calls, and there was some email transmittals of property owners that were interested in asking if they could too join the annexation application, or if they could be considered on their own to be annexed.
So we could consider at any time applications from surrounding neighborhoods...
Yes.
...to come into the city of Brookhaven as well?
Yes.
Along with this?
Right.
This is commercial property, and that would be residential?
Residential, yes. We've had a number of people expressing interest in that and are waiting for this to be annexed so they can join the city next.
Is that the 60% process?
No, this would be 100%. They would seek annexation representing their own property, their entire property, where it's contiguous to the city. Those that I've heard from have stated that they represented their friends or other neighbors that had interest too.
And we could consider annexation through referendum as well?
Yes, through referendum, or even by an act of the General Assembly that they can determine a boundary and annex it for the city without hearings.
Could I ask a question or two of Mr. Paquette? Is he still here? Thank you for coming back again. I know you were at the planning commission. I just had a question. I know that the conditions bring over the existing slups in zoning. Are there any outstanding slups that we should know about?
We're in pursuit of one development opportunity at present in the Magenta Pod, which is a... There is a slump approved by DeKalb for that parcel. And I think one of the gentlemen mentioned that a slump was approved for Pod 1, and I think that's correct several years ago. And I think he's also correct about the five-story approval. So those are the only ones that I'm aware of.
And the one up in the Magenta area, that is just a height slump?
It's a height slump, yeah.
And what does it go up to?
Four, actually five stories.
It just goes up?
We're allowed to go to five there. And of course, what we're asking for is up to 12. Now, the tallest building in the park now is 18 stories, so we're not asking for anything outrageous. There are several buildings that are 10, 11, up to 18 stories. We're asking for up to 12.
So you don't have any plans for like the big king and queen or a huge multi-story project?
No, ma'am. As I said, 12 is what we're asking for. The king and queen are about 38 or 40.
Right, right. There's been a lot of discussion about that with this PC3 zoning, it increases your density. Could you explain your view of that? Because I'm not clear whether... I know we're allowing a certain amount of density, but what you actually anticipate in this master plan and your future plans?
A 12-story limitation will be far more restrictive than the density that we've applied for. With a 12-story limitation, we may only achieve half of that density. The controlling factor is definitely, you know, 12 stories. It's a very limited amount of... If you look at the park, the only real opportunity to achieve a lot of density is in Pod 1. And because we already have existing, you know, six, 10, 18-story buildings, the simple fact is it will never demolish those buildings. It would just never be feasible economically to do away with an income-producing asset of that nature. So the development will occur in Pod 1, which is at the center of the park, on the Boulevard, you know, Four Lane Boulevard, and that's where we hope to achieve, over time, the mixed-use concept that PC3 comprises.
So let me make sure I understand. In the description of Pod 1, it talks about a Class A commercial office up to 12 stories. So does that mean that you're really only anticipating replacing those low rises with one 12-story office building? Or more?
I think if we were to study it carefully, I think any architectural or land planner would come to the conclusion that you would probably get three buildings in that pod, and two of them would be commercial office and probably one would be the multifamily component. And so you realistically end up with something on the order of 750,000 square feet total in that pod comprising those elements and some retail. You know, I think it would be almost a miraculous effort, and it's extremely efficient site plan to get any more than 750,000 square feet, especially if you're limited to 12 stories. So if we were seeking anything more than that, we'd have to come back for greater density and go through the whole planning commission process. density and, and go through the whole planning commission process and see all of you folks again. It's, 12 stories is, is a considerable limitation. And, you know, there was been some discussion earlier about having a more detailed site plan. Just very difficult to put together a site plan at this early stage. It takes time, it takes months, years, and then they evolve constantly. And what you, we, we need is, we need the flexibility when a, when a big user comes to town. And many big users, of course, are attracted to Atlanta. We see State Farm, we see all, all these corporate relos from all over the country. When you have a requirement like that, then you go into the planning stage and you hope to accomplish and develop a site plan to accommodate their need. Until you have the requirement, it's, it's really moot going through the effort of developing a site plan because it's going to change.
Would you have any problem with, at that point though, say years down the road, bringing back your site plan for review? I think right now we require, obviously the planning department reviews it. How would you consider if we asked the city council to review it and sign off on it?
Have no problem at all with, with bringing a site plan for your review.
You wouldn't mind that as a condition then?
Pardon me?
You wouldn't object to that as a condition?
No, I would not.
And then, just so I'm clear on, I know there's been figures thrown out about we're doubling your density, we're giving you a $30 million entitlement. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what is the truth in all of this.
Yeah, I think, I think to say that we're, that in, that the density in the application would, yes, in fact, I guess, double. I can tell you right now that we'll never double the density with a 12-story limitation. I think we'd be lucky to achieve a 50% increase in what, in what we have in density at this point in time. 50, 60% would probably be, you know, a million square feet. I think if we were to get much more than a million square feet across, in, in, in the commercial office component, it would be, we'd absolutely have to exceed 12 stories. But, you know, we're, we're willing to work with the 12-story limitation because we think if we bring a requirement that exceeds 12 stories, we're happy to go through the planning commission and go through this whole process for rezoning.
I heard a figure a minute ago about 9,000 to 10,000 parking spaces. Where would you, is that feasible?
We would never be able to get nine or 10, but if you, if you took, if you look at the ratio and based on the incremental square footage of office that is actually in the application, you probably come, you might come up to that 9,000 or 10,000 parking spaces. But as I, as I said earlier, we'd be lucky to get much more than half of that if we fully develop this park and use every square inch of developable land. One thing to keep in mind is this park is on I-85, major traffic artery in Atlanta. There are eight points of ingress and egress into this park. There's not another park in Atlanta of this size or this ultimate fully-developed size that has anywhere near the amount of ingress and egress that this, that this park affords. So is it going to put a bunch of traffic on Claremont? No. The vast majority of those commuters are going to be coming on the traffic artery on I-85.
That was, that was going to be my question, actually. I, do you know the statistics of your current office environment of how much is commercial and how much is residential? And then of those commuters, where they live or, I mean, are they...
Where they're ingressing from?
Are there, where they live, places on there? Or are they all...
I, I can only tell you anecdotally, the vast majority are coming on 85. The vast majority. I would venture to say 90%. Because they're, they're coming along 285, they get on 85 South, or they're coming down 75 and swinging up 85 North, or they're coming from southern part of the city and coming up 85.
And what is the, the mix right now? And what would you envision?
We, we only own, we only own the office buildings. 1.7 million square feet of office buildings in the park. Gables owns the multifamily project.
Would your multifamily envision any, is it all, would it all be apartments? Would there be a townhome or condo component if the market saw that?
That would be, that would be strictly dependent on the market.
Right.
There was a, there was a question recently raised about if you, if we, if you got this PC3 zoning, which at least on paper entitles you to higher densities, et cetera. What would we, you know, there's, someone would say there might be a danger that that's a value, very valuable thing to have and that you could flip that and, you know, make a lot of money from that, from that entitlement.
Yeah, I think that value is grossly overestimated in today's market, but these, that density is one that you would hope to achieve over the course of 10 or 15 years. And is there any real value to it today? Not, not really, because we still have to do the work to attract tenants, to attract the market to Century Center, and then develop, develop the buildings. It's a theoretical value, but it really, does it raise the land value today? Not one bit. And, and, and we are a long-term investor. We're a New York Stock Exchange traded real estate investment trust, been around for 35 years, traded on the exchange for since 90, since the early 90s. And we are committed to Century Center. We have our corporate offices there, we have 50 employees there in Century Center. We own 50 buildings in Atlanta and we choose to have our corporate office in Century Center. We're committed, it's core property for us, and we think there's a bright future for Century Center. It's how we, it's exactly how we define core property. It's an infill location, it's got great potential long-term, and, you know, it's, it's, it's done extremely well for us. It's, it's, we've never dipped below 90% occupancy in the park by virtue of its terrific location, ease of access, proximity to amenities, et cetera.
And you are predominantly a GSA or a government landlord?
Well, we do have, in, in, in that park, in Century Center, we have probably half of our tenants are government entities. And there are, as some gentleman mentioned earlier, FBI is, is, is a tenant. GA, General Accounting Office of the Federal Government is a tenant. Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms is, is a tenant. The Georgia Department of Revenue is a tenant. So roughly half of our tenants are, are government, but the other half are private sector.
So one last question. So I just want to make sure I capture sort of the vision that you have for what is really, what, a 40, 50-year-old property?
Yes.
And, and I think that's part of what we're struggling with, is that of course it's already mostly built out, but you want to rebuild and, and bring it up to a more modern use.
Well, the roads, yes ma'am, the roads are in place. The boulevard, the four-lane boulevard with the median, landscape median is in place. The parkway is in place. There are sidewalks, there's probably a mile's worth of sidewalks that actually link all of the buildings in the park at this time. The, our vision is for a 10 or 12-story, beautifully executed, central town center. A place where folks will live, work, eat, play. Our intention is to have essentially on the first floor, retail amenities, a Starbucks, that, that, that sort of restaurants, that sort of component. And above that first floor, there will be residences and office space. It's the central area of the park. It makes the most sense. The infrastructure's there, the roads are there, the access to the ingress egress is there, but there are 50-year-old, single-story obsolete buildings in that location.
And just because your roads are private, doesn't mean the rest of us can't come and go. Is that right?
Right. It just means we pay for the upkeep.
Oh, okay.
And, and we're responsible for anything if, if the, I, I heard one gentleman talk about the bridge not meeting code. That's a very stout bridge. It didn't move a centimeter with the great flood of September of '09 or whenever it was, which was a 500-year flood event. But if it did fail, we're responsible for it, as long as it's a private road.
Have you ever had serious flooding along the creek there?
There, the, if you look at the green space just to the, to the north of Pod 2, that's a, that's actually a 100-year flood zone, and that filled up during that great flood.
I'm sorry?
The green zone...
Feel there?
See the Pod 2, which is a sort of purple pod, the small one? In the, in the, it's on the...
Oh, okay, okay.
You see that, that area, that area did flood, but it's within the 100-year flood plane. And, 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 you know, Highwoods is, any developer is subject to extreme careful, tight regulation by the Department of Natural Resources State Agency. The first thing we have to do if we develop a site plan is hire a civil engineer to do flood studies. He, he completes his very detailed calculations and stamps the drawings and submits it to the municipality, to the DNR, Department of Natural Resources. And then they hire their engineers to go back and double-check all of his calculations. And I can tell you that this process has gotten to be extremely costly, but it's a good process because it keeps developers today from contributing to a flood, flood problem. And we have built massive underground detention ponds. And that's, that's what we'll do here. We'll be, we'll be required to develop massive underground detention ponds to absorb runoff in a storm in, in a, in a 100-year flood. And it's extremely costly, but these processes today are required. Any future development is not going to add to the flood, flooding problem. It's there. We didn't create any flooding problem with any, with the three buildings that we've developed since we've owned the park, and we won't in the future.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Paqueta, please. Am I on here? Is this working? Okay, great. First of all, thank you for coming. The input from both residents and the applicant here is of extreme value to us, so we really do appreciate it. My question to you first. The question came up about the bridge issue. PC3 requires public streets versus private streets. Would you be prepared to make sure that those bridges were an acceptable code condition before turning them over to the city of Brookhaven?
Absolutely.
Okay. That, that was of concern to us, so appreciate that. Now, comment.
Would you be willing to enter into like a public-private partnership to maintain the bridge?
Sure would.
Okay.
Leave it to you to go, one more. Just a comment now.
As long as he's saying yes, you gotta keep asking.
Yeah, you're the salesman here. You've said a couple of things tonight, one of them that I hadn't heard before, which I thought was worth repeating. You say by the city of Brookhaven preapproving PC3, it allows you the ability to have preapproval on zoning, so you could go after clients a lot more easily. It would be, it's basically allowed you to be a lot more nimble. That is definitely pro-business and is definitely pro-development. I think that's worth repeating. But secondly, you said something else tonight, which is definitely a part of that, and it was just recently, where you agreed to submit a site plan to council for approval prior to moving forward, which is a check and balance to me, long-term. Am I correct? I mean, I don't want to overword you.
Let me make sure I stated what I meant.
Sure.
I, I said that we would submit a site plan, I think what I said was we, we would submit a site plan for any new development that we would ask for.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm still satisfied with that because there is a fallback in our code system that allows for substantial change to be gone, to go to council for approval. But I just thought those points were worth repeating. Sure.
Thank you, Jim. Joe, I mean Joe, Jim?
Jim.
Thank you, Joe, Jim.
The recently, recently approved slump aside, what's your timing, what's your schedule? What do you envision this project when you see, starting with some of the developments other than the ones that are currently in the pipeline, developments on this property?
The market is, is still in recovery in Atlanta, but there are opportunities that fall out of the sky at any moment. There have been a number of relatively high-profile corporate relos that have come to Atlanta and tenant representative, tenant rep brokers have asked us, what do you have? What, how, show us a, show us a, a pad that you can build on and, and, by the way, are you zoned? And I have to say, we're not zoned. And so generally, we get cut right there. But you can, you know, Atlanta's a terrific attractor of, of corporate relos, really has led most of the nation in the last three years in attracting corporate relos. We haven't been able to tell those prospects that we're zoned.
Like as, as a REIT, as a publicly traded company, you obviously are doing some planning that, while I understand there's follow-the-sky projects, there are also, and I guess I'm more, I'm more interested in knowing, follow-the-project, follow-the-sky projects aside, what is your schedule? What is, what, what do you envision the build-out of this? And what have you projected in your, in any of your REIT documents or any of your, your long-term planning for this area? When do you see this coming into production and being taken from the current to something that is more consistent with what you're asking for?
There's nothing in writing as far as what we would expect because it's just too difficult to predict. But if the CEO or the COO of the company who I report to asks me, Jim, when do you expect to develop Century Center? I would, my answer would be, I think in five years, will be well underway. Sooner with, with specific requirements that come, come to market. Could literally happen any day, next year. And, but I, my feeling is that it will be in, in, in this cycle or the next cycle. And this cycle is just beginning. The development cycle, you know, is something that, you know, has been in an off-market for the better part of the last five years. The next five years will be a development cycle, and I think that there will be opportunities to, to do, do something meaningful in Century Center in this cycle. I think by the next cycle, I think it'll probably be fully developed.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Anybody, anything else for Jim or staff? We have more, one more public comment? Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Coleman?
Hello, I'm Cindy Coleman, and I've lived in the Brookhaven area since '82 and then moved in '93 to Dresden Drive. So I'm very concerned with this area because first of all, Pod 1 reminds me of when they were laying out Atlanta and they laid out the perimeter with 285, everybody trying to get into Pod 1 and then trying to get out at the same time. And so this congestion seems to be a real concern with the access road only being two-lane one-way. And also, if you've ever tried to get out of the parking lot at Sam's, even with the traffic light, you're normally not just waiting through one or two lights. The next thing that concerns me is if you're going up to 12 stories, you could easily get 6,000 or 7,000 square feet on the ground floor. So going up to 75 square, 75,000 square feet doesn't seem to be much of an issue. That can be done very easily. But the concern here is that this is near PDK Airport, and we have had blatant crashes in the neighborhoods before. And so this could make it trouble with visibility and what pollution is coming out of this area. Also, there has been some flooding in homes in the neighborhoods around here. And FEMA came in and several homes were torn down within just a few miles of here. So I'd also like that to be considered as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. All right, anybody else? Daniel?
I have one question for Susan, maybe Tim might, you might have to answer this, but which way does that river flow? North or south, doesn't it?
South.
It flowing south.
Okay, all right. I think we have, you want to do a follow-up?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Just a quick question. On the zoning report that came back from the zoning, planning commission, it also says there has been no comment yet by the city of Brookhaven Public Works Department on possible effects of this zoning request? Isn't that something that should really be taken into consideration? Shouldn't they have input before you even try and make a decision on the zoning request? Especially one of this magnitude? Just to comment, I know you can't answer a question, but it seems to me that, and Mr. McKenna's point was well-made, but I don't understand how those cars get from I-85 into Century Center without getting on Claremont Road. So there will be infrastructure changes that'll have to take... So there will be infrastructure changes that'll have to take place there or the congestion will just be ridiculous. I don't at all oppose improvements for DeKalb County. I hope you don't take these as negative comments, but I think they're all things that definitely should be taken into consideration before you vote on the Planning Commission's recommendations.
Thank you. Any more public comment? All right. Jim, I did have one last question, just in reference to that. If you could explain your ingress egress real quick so that people understand how they get into them?
If I may walk over to...
This is I-85 headed southbound. And on the southbound side of I-85, there's a two-lane access road. And from this two-lane access road, there's an ingress point here and egress point here. An ingress point here, here, and an egress point here. Another ingress egress point here. So all of this traffic coming up I-85 gets directly into the park. It never has to go to Clermont Road.
So there are five ingress egress points on I-85 access road?
Yes.
And there are three other places?
There are actually one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, okay.
Just one away.
All right.
And while you're there, the question about you said you'd be subject to any height limitations pertaining to PDK now. But I know you have an 18-story building.
Yeah, there's an 18-story, this building here is 18 stories.
Okay.
So we're only asking for 12. And these buildings over, this is 11, and this is 10, and this is 10. And several others that are 6%. So it's really, 12 stories is obviously less than our tallest building in the park.
How tall is that area?
That's a good question. I really don't know.
17, I think. 50 or 17.
But you've got the corners. You've got the corner.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment, please, regarding Public Works?
Three minutes only.
I'll be less than three. While it's not in the planning analysis, Mr. Meehan did have a conversation with me early on when this application was first filed, and he did review it.
Who is Mr. Meehan?
He is our Public Works Director. Thank you. First of all, his first review was that all streets and roads served by this project are not public. So he said there would be no city participation in any maintenance or repair. The other comment that he made was this project and property, like all other properties in the city, would be subject to the Stormwater Utility Program, which this property is already participating in through DeKalb County. This property in the future will be subject to, beginning in 2014, the streetlight assessment for all the streetlights that are out there. So those comments and discussions and review I had with Mr. Meehan.
Okay. Thank you. Last one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chris Rocket?
Mr. Rocket?
Hello, my name is Chris Rocket. I'm a citizen of Shambly at 3660 Vanette Road in the Sexton Woods neighborhood. And I'm very confused why you cannot answer questions, but can somebody out here answer questions? All right, so also very confused, yes, people, first of all, how do you get onto that access road? Is it the Schallford exit coming south from I-85? And then if you are exiting Century Center, the only feasible on-ramp onto I-85 in the north direction is via Clermont, unless I'm misunderstanding something. And I was also, there is also a high school there, St. Pius X, some traffic. I think it's reasonable to demand a traffic study from the developer before approving a zoning issue.
Thank you, Mr. Rocket. Any more comments? All right, any more questions from council to staff or anybody else? All right. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor for adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. And now we'll move on, unless you'll need a break. No, you didn't get to go to the bathroom.
I'd love to take a look.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, then we'll begin the last meeting of the evening. Thank you.